...and keeping eye on people. But I don't think we've hit over 200 at any one time. And so, and I think we can handle 200 safely. The pool, based on some calculations, literally could hold legally hold 507 people. I don't know what all 507 would do. But, but it would be, it would be quite, you know, it, it, that's the capacity. So, I, I think we see the capacity as our ability to keep it safe.
Some pool rules highlights. I don't think we need to go through all of them, but we do want to point out that one of the things, you know, teenagers have to be 13 and older. I mean, teenagers can enter with an adult if they're 13 and older. Other kids that are younger have to have an adult within arm's reach.
Kind of threw that up there to see if, council, if you had any questions about any of these. If you've had people approach you about the rules, I think they've been adopted pretty good, Eric.
And they're also posted on the signs. These are currently directly posted on the signs.
Yeah, so, I don't know if anybody's heard anything.
What's the premise of the food and beverages?
Okay.
Especially if we're going to put a snack bar there. We have this rule now, if we're going to put a snack bar there, we'll have to eat in it.
Yeah. So, we, we started out, again, the experiment has been with, with no food, uh, no food and, and water only. I, I think because we're worried about sticky food, ants, and, and just the, uh, of all the things we have going on, whether people pick up after themselves, trash and wrappers going in. There is, uh, when, what I have heard of the, um, the previous, uh, food concessions, it was, um, it was warm tortilla shells with butter. Did they say it right?
Tortillas with butter, buttered tortillas.
Buttered tortillas, okay. I didn't write it down. I'm, I'm working.
It's not correct.
And candy and chips and things like that. There wasn't, so I, I think we need to find a, a match of, of food that is accessible and, and will not make a mess, will not attract ants. Sticky sodas definitely out. Certain types of foods that spill, I mean, so, so we haven't tackled that yet, but we haven't had a lot of pushback. I, I think people want to keep the place clean. The park is right there. Because we don't have waiting lines, they can, they can go, they can leave, they can eat in the park, they can get their food and, and go back and forth. So, it hasn't been as big of an issue as, as we want. But I, I, I think that's what we're going to roll out next year with the, with the completion of the, um, the concession stand and, and see that. But, but we haven't gotten a lot of pushback on that, at least we haven't heard at the gate. Eric, any comments on, they've, they've been pretty good about that. I think that about, the average stay is about two hours. They come in, and, um, so it hasn't been a problem yet. What was the other thing? So, no, of course, no glass. And, um, oh, the other thing that, two things that I think that we found out. Luckily, we bought, I don't know how many, but I think about 24 certified Coast Guard, uh, small floating, you know, life vests. And, and that's been a big hit with the kids, because people want to come in with their kids. They want to make sure they, you know, they have a good time. And then, a lot, we're doing, um, swim diapers there also. So, because they'll come with them and we're encouraging, um, parents to bring, if they're bringing swim diaper, diapers of their children in, swim diapers, to bring an extra. Because a lot of times, you know, they go to the pool and now it's like, eh. So, we need to get, uh, we, we've been supplying those. We'll have to work on probably being able to include those next year. But, um, but I think it's a, we found that that's been very popular as, as a second set of diapers. And, and just real quick, Linda, have we missed anything on, on food? Or did you have any comments on? Yeah. Because I, I just, I want to get, include everybody. And, and the food trucks if you want, because.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. As Paul mentioned, we, we're not being kicked back. In fact, on Facebook, we're being supported by the decision. People want to maintain the cleanliness and the pristiness. They are very proud of our community pool. And I've been there several times with my kids. People, I think, actually enjoy the communities in our park more now. They bring, it's good food. I've seen them bring barbecues and they come and go as they, as they please. But we've been also let known on Facebook, and I've had moms reach out, when they take their kids down to aquatic centers down in the valley, that's pretty standard. You cannot bring your own food or drinks, like maybe bottled water. And actually vending machines are sometimes the only food available at any of these aquatic centers. So, as moving forward with the development of the concession stand and of course developing a menu that will minimize the potential mess, we don't want wrappers ending up in the pool. We don't want Takis crowded everywhere and everything turns orange and flowing, bringing it crazy. And so, we, we do want to be mindful of that. And with food trucks as well, again, we're kind of working on improving our policy and how food trucks can apply to be the vendor of the day at, at the community pool. And again, we kind of perceive this gaining access within, in the community center park. That way, we can continue to maintain this beautiful facility. And as we all know, we, we don't have an overabundance of staffing or lifeguards. We need to keep them focused on what they're there for, the safety of our, our guests and not picking up trash. People actually have been hacking in and hacking out. I think I'm going to keep rolling with that. I mean, you see it utilized in national park campaigns, you know, just being mindful and have that community pride to, to keep it looking good.
And, and there was one other issue I wanted to bring up. And originally, when we had, had talked about this, we had talked about structuring this so we could have the splash pad open independent of the pool.
So the grant was written on it?
What's that?
That's how the grant was given to us? It had to be open?
No, not that it had to be open, but that
Had to be accessible?
It had to be, that it had to not have a charge attached to it. That would be free.
So what happens when we?
It would, not that it would be accessible year round.
What happens when we start targeting?
Well, then that, so, so this is part of the experimental fa- uh, phase. We, we were thinking we could, we could have it fenced off and separated. The four-foot fence is not enough to, to have, have it open without having lifeguards in there because it's, because kids could get around that. So, so that is another one where we're going to put our heads together and figure out. We've gotten some pricing on changing the fencing around a little bit. And, and then switching the gates around to where if we had a, a, a full six-foot fence and then unlock the gates of the park, um, I believe we could, we could open it after the season or, or off hours. But, um, but we haven't had any complaints. I think the, the splash pad has been popular. But, um, we're, we're still working on, on the, the structure of that. We had contemplated separating out at the start of the, of the season as having splash pad a separate and allow it to be open even when people were in the pool. But we, the feasibility of keeping people to not walk from the splash pad. A mom comes there with her variety of kids and, you know, different ages, and they're wanting to go back and forth from the, the kiddie slide, which is a big hit, the little tiny one, to the splash pad. And so, it's working out good now. We're going to have to see how it tails off with, uh, and, and the, the, the requests, the needs and, and, um, and on that as, as we learn.
Paul, let me kind of fill in. When we wrote that grant, are the footprints of the pool are completely different than what it does now? The splash pad was supposed to be where the, the former baby pool was. And so, the way that we, we talked about doing that is cording off, making that accessible where the former concession stand was, they could kind of fit it out. And we would handle entry with colored wristbands. So, again, you know, we, these are great problems to have because we had so many stakeholders come to the table. And now, now we have what we have, we have the true aquatic center. So, like Paul had just mentioned, these are, these are things that we'll, we'll figure out as we operate this soft season so that we can come back next year with a fully fleshed out operating plan.
And, and then the, the, bringing up the splash pad, there's also, we're in the works of getting a, um, a, a large shade structure to put up on the splash pad side. That's something that the, um, uh, Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center had, had offered to, to, to purchase early on so we can get that. And, and that's another, that's on our shortlist to try and get that handled. And, John, do you, do I, I, how far away are we from getting a, a handle on the, is it 20 by 20?
Yeah, it was actually 20, 24 by 24 shade structure. That would cover the green space that would be right off the side of the splash pad.
Yeah. And so, we're, and we're going to, and we have the, like I say, with our partnership with, with the hospital, we'll get that up as soon as we can. So, I think that's, I think that's pretty much everything that's fallen through, I just wanted to mention. So, Eric, we turn it back to you.
Thank you. So, I, I think one of the other things we should mention about pool rules and highlights is that the lifeguards have been doing a good job of being responsible about their work being the last thing to keep people safe. And unfortunately, having to have someone meet with their running team once you're ready, I think.
And I, I will say PD makes, uh, ran, they, they crew on a, a, a tight, well, not a schedule, but they're always cruising through the park and not checking on things. And, and if the, the, if there's any issues or anything like that, they're quick to respond just to make sure that it's, it's always a, a happy spot and, and everything is nipped early before anything gets out of control.
So, cooperation, our staff requirements for a day each day. There are two full-time public staff, uh, employees who take care of the machines, operations, and chemicals. There's one there every day of the week, so seven days a week, and on Wednesdays they overlap like two. So, those, those two gentlemen have been doing a fantastic job of getting that going. And we just got in, in good space for understanding what are chemical usages versus people and the temperature. I mean, we're sure we have enough in stock without having to worry about running out. So, if that goes under control and the safety to keep that stuff safe. Life pool manager, there always has to be one there every day. And lifeguards are about 12, eight on duty, eight on duty, two on service, checking the restrooms, checking things on the grounds, while two are on break. The other four are at the pool, two on deep end, two on the shallow side. And then they do a 20-minute rotation so that they won't get bored or get tired. So, they're still alert to do what they're really there for, to keep people safe. Cashiers, we do have two of those at the date right now, those two staff members that are handling the folks on train, making sure that they get the proper wristbands on.
And then, the mayor and council, or vice mayor and council, they're the ones that are quizzing the kids and, and working with people. How many in your group? Who can swim? Who can't? What color wristbands do you get? They, they cut them off when they leave. And, and that'll come back when, when we start taking money and stuff like that. But, but they're very busy trying to, they're like the ambassadors of the first contact that, that they make with that. And, and the, and the, the, the two ladies are doing very well that, that I've seen working out there. I think there's a couple more. So, but that's, even though we're not taking money, they're there watching the door and, and monitoring the flow and, and doing the counts, getting us the numbers, so. What's that?
Helping to realize Boston Thompson's stuff. And having up livers.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I've heard a lot of these kinds of questions come up, um, too many from the public. How are they being manipulated? Are they monitoring the front door? They're worried about people just walking in and walking right into the pool, for example. And I said, no, 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 we have staff. We're watching, hopefully, monitoring all activity. And there's enough staff to do that and lifeguard duties at the same time. So, these are all, it's all due to us as well as all these questions floating up there and questions. We just have that. Kind of needs to be in that position, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, these are the pool counts so far for these, give or five days are on the screen. Um, it's pretty much, pretty close to 4:40 every day, give or take a little bit more on certain days. So, it's, it's a pretty good solid turnout and it kind of sticks there.
Listen, um, any idea how many kids from outside of Globe are coming? Is there, I mean, because I, I mean, I was one of the concerns about thinking that there was some good kids.
We, we, I don't have any idea. Yeah, I, I, I have no idea. I, I know they're about three to one kids to adults, but, but we don't really know who they are, where they're coming from. They're just happy to be there.
Could we possibly do that with our cell phone tracking somewhere?
I think not. I, I don't think it's, I, I, I don't, I don't know the value of finding out. I mean, are we trying to find out whether?
No, I was curious if we had an idea. I asked you for a point.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if we can see if Miami has kids there.
Yeah, on, on that, I, I don't, I don't know, but I, I don't think, I'm, I'm hesitant to try to track that. Okay, so Linda.
So, I'm, I'm not tracking, I'm not up there as staff, but just out of the mall and knowing pretty clearly, you know, where the kids are from. I would say it's been 60, 40 minutes, 60% are from Globe, 40% from Miami. So, we're seeing a, and we're seeing enough taking that. I'm taking my kids there. My kids have been there every day since it opened. I have it, but, um, you know, with, with our kids more, you know, it used to be, you only socialize with the kids that you went to school with, whether you went to Globe or whether you went to Miami. Now that our kids play sports year-round with each other, this is, this is really a way for them to continue that contact. And so, there are herds of kids that go up there and they, they're all from, you know, the hundred football team. So, they can have their, their event and the parade. And so, we're seeing a really good mix and how they're getting there through carpooling, definitely.
And to the Vice Mayor and members of council, I know one thing the mayor has been working on is trying to, to see about the, the transit. And, and can we set that up so where, where we can get a schedule to ride? Do you know anything more about that?
Yes, they're, they're working on in, uh, including that into, into their schedule.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, that'll, that'll happen within the summer. But if can't, then definitely within the, um, the weekends that we have coming up until we include our operations.
And usual. All special events, these are the special event pricing that we have so far. Most of these fees that you see at the top three lines are directly from the fee schedule. It was passed last year. We've learned that staffing requirements do require one pool manager to be on site, and that's 311 an hour. And then there's lifeguards, two minimum, one additional for every 40 people. It just depends on how many people it would be for that event and then how many hours they would have it full is what they're, what the price for the, it would be. And as Paul said, we're sort of doing soft reservation ideas for July after July 4th and trying to gather some stuff, gather some better information for people. And I think we just hammered those out.
Yeah.
Or in the middle of finishing that, so we can start doing that. So, we can start with you now.
Yeah, I, I think after this presentation and, and displaying this, I, I think that we'll start firming those up and, and securing these. But, but please take a look and, and any feedback you have.
So, one of the things that are on, on there is there's a $100 security deposit which is in the fee schedule as well. And we've come up with, it's refundable unless there are damages from the event or if they cancel last minute, because we will have planned, you know, lifeguards think they're working and somebody in there on, and you just retain it. That we don't retain their, the cost of their event. So, if the cost of their event is a thousand dollars and they have a $100 security deposit to cancel, we would only keep the 100, they would get their 1,000 back. Or if the weather causes it to be canceled. And of course, we won't keep anything.
But, but Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and Members of Council, I, I think you need to have something in there. So, so at least there is, people are thinking about that, um, whether they're going to cancel or not. And, and if you hold the spot, uh, open, that means somebody else can't reserve that. And so, 14 days, we, we pretty much have time to, if, if there's an, uh, something important, a date that, that other people are competing for, so.
And we actually have three different part groups that want to do July 15th. So, I, I, the first person to ask us is the top of the list. And soon as we open this up, you know, if they pay to have it booked, then we'll be done, so. That's every that page.
Any questions?
Okay, just a technical question. Does this center have a, a intercom system?
Microphone.
That works.
Oh, yeah.
Lifeguards are equipped with, um, Wa- Watsukis to communicate with each other. And the, um, pool staff, uh, in terms of the maintenance staff, as well as there's a pool cell phone and a pool, uh, public works hotline when they keep them. And then when it comes to talking to people, whatever they have, they're allowed. And if there's an emergency, they actually have a siren on them. And they are allowed.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, when Watsukis comes around, you start, it's, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to.
I'm a little setting play. That was already happening, so.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor and Members of Council, like I say, pool safety, um, whether we're, we're ready to open. I, I know that we had a, a couple incidents where we had to close a little early. And splash pad, making sure that's operating, um, pool, the, the slide also. And so, we're, our, our goal is to keep everything functioning as, as, um, through the hours we have. But, um, but if there's a safety issue, we're, we're still working up those policies as to what mandates, uh, closure or not. I, I will tell you, we, we err at a side caution right now.
Next on the agenda is the, uh, the second element. Matters listed under the consent element are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one vote and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk. Prior to the consideration of the consent agenda, the mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and their staff may remove any item for separate consideration. Item A. Consideration of waiver of section 2 dash 4 dash 10A prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. Item one, accounts payable, $696,576 of very free stuff. Item two, consideration of approval of council limits. One, May 23rd, 2023. That's all there is. So, who did you read?
Second.
So, I have a motion on the second. Talk for the vote, all of you, if you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any, any of whom? Both in house. Thank you. Ready, ready. Your votes.
I want, I want to be back.
You just had a hard time. I took my chokes.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Members of Council, Mr. Vice Mayor, you have a, a way with the gavel.
You have to sing it with the spatula. Okay, on the due business. A public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 885. Request to rezone, uh, one, or plus or minus one acre of land from C2 intermediate commercial zone to the T4 or TR transitional residential zone located at the northwest corner of East South Street and East Maple Street. Now, ATM 205 dash 15 dash 05A and B, case number Z dash 23 dash 02. Show me your ordinance 85.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Ordinance number 885. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Globe amending the zoning ordinance of the city by amending the city of Globe zoning map from the intermediate commercial C2 zoning district to the transitional residential TR zoning district for a total of two parcels consisting of one acre of land located at the northwest corner of East South Street and East Maple Street in the city of Globe, county of Hila, state of Arizona. This council pays with that reading.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Stapleton, council members. Pleasure to be before you this evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Oh, on your screen, you should see the city zoning map, online zoning map. And I thought we'd just start by orienting you to the property, which is right in the center of the map, adjacent to this blue TR area. You can see my, um, my mouse. Uh, it's basically off northwest corner of South Ash, or I'm sorry, South Street and, um, Maple Street right here. These two parts, these are what you're considering. Uh, and then here is a blow up can show what's going on there. To the west of the site is TR transitional residential zone. Basically, your transitional zone between commercial and residential uses. It allows for, uh, light offices but, and, uh, multifamily, single-family, uh, dwellings. Uh, and then obviously, the property is currently in C2, which is your intermediate commercial zone district. Really designed for retail office type of activities. So, that request is coming before you from the property owner. At one time, this was a single property. It was subdivided after 2007 when a duplex was built on the, uh, what, the east lot. The property owners that were in business together to develop that ended up subdividing it and then now have a remaining vacant lot next door. Uh, there, the owner of that remaining vacant lot likes to build a single-family home. And it's been conveyed to staff and, um, that instituted our conversation of, oh, we need to, we don't allow single-family homes in our C2 zoning district. It would be best to rezone that. By the way, we don't allow duplex development in our C2 zoning district. So, we should probably bring that parcel up, that duplex on. So, those are the two parcels. It would rezone the same as the, uh, neighborhood to the west there. That's the proposal. Staff to hold the required neighborhood meeting. Uh, we had one resident from the, uh, the transitional neighborhood there off of 11th Street. Just interested in what was, uh, what was involved. And I, I will point out, he, uh, mentioned, uh, they did a little research online with the, of what transitional housing was. And it didn't give him a, a good warm feeling, uh, based on the state, uh, standards. And I had to be clear that that has nothing to do with the, our title for our transitional zoning district, which is intended to be more of a transitional use versus a transitional housing. So, I just wanted to give that clarification as I explained to him out there on the site. Since then, uh, when zoning commission held their public hearing last Wednesday evening, and we had three members of the public and neighbors in this area that spoke in support of, uh, the rezoning of the C2 commercial property to, uh, allow for residential development in the TR zoning district. And zoning commission, you may also recommend city council adopt ordinance 885 and rezone its properties to allow move over with, uh, residential development. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you have.
No questions, Anna?
Very good. Well, uh, Vice Mayor, so this is a public hearing. And there's no questions. If you could, take a moment, you'll strike your gavel and open up a public hearing and see if anybody in the public is, uh, interested to make a comment on this.
Right?
Right?
Open the public hearing. Do we have any, do we have any public comments? Doesn't appear that we have.
And shall there be nothing online?
Nothing online. And no one approaching from the audience on this?
Very good. You'll strike your spatula again and, uh, close the, the public hearing. And you're welcome.
There you go. It was a public hearing.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would like to bring this item forward to next meeting to possible access.
Second.
Okay, so we have a vote in the ring, so. I am going to the next team. Anna, second. All of you, if you say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any opposed? Any of whom? Both in bounds. Okay, item B. Consideration to approve the final, uh, replat of blocks four dash ten, block five, or south quote. Uh, final flat, case number S dash two three dash zero one, A three. Lot combination with the dedication of, uh, right-of-way and east next three utilities and an associated night, or right-of-way abandonment in consideration to approve resolution number eighteen seventy-nine. The resolution of the council to abandon a portion of West Tremont Street in conjunction uh, with the final replat of block four dash ten, block five, the south quote. Final flat, Dana? Oh, uh, shall I begin reading, uh, resolution eighteen seventy-nine?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Resolution number eighteen seventy-nine, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Globe, Hila County, Arizona, providing for abandonment of a certain portion of the city's existing right-of-way on West Tremont Street to the adjacent property owner within the city limits of the city of Globe, Hila County, Arizona. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Stapleton, council members. Um, I'm sharing the screen here just to orient you to the properties, uh, that, the property that's in question with the three questions in this final flat. Uh, and basically what the question is, they like the same property, owns three parcels of land that they'd like to consolidate. And there happens to be a alley going through that. And just orient you to that property location. You see the, uh, I six B curve here going into Ash Street. Uh, and then I believe this is, um, uh, gosh, is that Maple?
Maple.
Yes, Maple, going underneath the, uh, overpass and then here it heads up the hillside. Um, so this sounds a bit, that was, uh, subdivided in nineteen oh nine. And, uh, you know, it's a little different. A lot of our downtown was subdivided around that same time or, or plats were created. Uh, and in that situation, our downtown, north or west and north of our downtown, the residential area, or east, sorry. Um, they just kind of applied a grid, uh, block system over our hillside area. Turned into, didn't, doesn't function very well. So we've got a lot of hot roadways. Anyway, in this situation in the early nineteen hundreds, they decided, well, let's try a subdivision that might follow the terrain, the topography. Uh, and what these roads do that were dedicated, Maple, it actually turns into, uh, eucalyptus back here. So this would be eucalyptus. These are the three parcels in question, owned by Mr. Scott Skaggs and his wife, Cory. Um, those three lots are in question at the end of, uh, what's now, most utilized for access to all these properties is Tremont Street. You have lifted out the new on the, on the north side and eucalyptus on the south side. Well, if you've been up there, I won't bore you with the, uh, visuals from Google Earth, but those are huge cut slopes. And it was not accessible or feasible to get driveways up to these lots. Now, these three lots that we're looking at, and I'll show you the flat just before you. And the final flat is basically a subdivision or re-subdivision, uh, of a prior subdivision. So, um, this in this situation. So these three lots, these would be actually seven lots in total. The alley, all of, or Tremont Street, all of it always existed and grew here since that flat reached the end. Um, but as you can see, over time, the lots were consolidated. So as the title of the flat or replat, uh, explains, lots four through ten, well, now we just have three lots. Um, those were consolidated, who have consolidation process, just the recording, I, I believe, of the county. Anyway, this replat will now, um, re-identify those properties in, with a, it's a title that's consisting with the original plaque. It makes it very easy to have a real estate in this situation as well as a replat. So here's the applicant's request. Um, the request to abandon the, uh, road, Tremont Street roadway that was between these parcels. Uh, we looked at access to those other parcels and everybody has access and, and you have to utilize this portion. Um, so for that reason, uh, staff is recommending the abandonment of the common alley in between. And that's going to be the second agenda item we'll talk about after we finish with the plaque. There has to be two actions here of the plaque. What? My apologies. The plaque effectively is removing those, those common lot lines in the roadway, uh, Tremont Street in between. Uh, the city requires all roadways to have, uh, a terminus that is a dead end that allows for fire emergency vehicles to turn around without multiple. Back there that realize they're, they need to turn around or look for gas. Uh, Mr. Skaggs has agreed to dedicate the turnaround. You see here that's the roadway and that will be the terminus to Tremont Street. Uh, should you decide to approve this plaque and decide to, uh, take action to abandon, uh, the, the alleyway roadway. Uh, the process to abandon that roadway has to be through a resolution of the city council and that's why you have that additional item up, all the rest, a second after, after this final plaque. Um, so with that, uh, again, there's very limited access.
There is.
Uh, Mr. Skaggs currently accesses property either through Tremont or also, uh, through the rear, uh, of the property here. Station right here, so that will be banned. So with that, staff has recommended, uh, council approve this final plaque, um, to allow that kind of consolidation of those parcels. Uh, we recognize that those parcels were too developed independently, very difficult, but not just prohibitive. And anytime we can consolidate hillside lots like that, that just aren't feasible without extensive rating, gringe and variances, um, we're, we're in support of. Uh, so obviously we're in a position, a situation here. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval of this final replat. Uh, with, we have four conditions, which are basically just notations for the engineers to make a couple little updates. Texture updates on, on, uh, the document before we have my hours for the mayor and, um, staff to sign. So with that, staff has recommended approval of the final plaque and after you, uh, consider taking action, uh, we'll move on to the resolution. Unless you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so just a couple of things. Um, we've done a few of these in the past, you know. You recall thinking that we had to do, first of all, a survey of the property that we were going to abandon. And last time we did this, they had to offer to split the property with the other adjacent property owner. Is that not requiring a new situation?
It is. Uh, Mayor Councilman Shipley, or sorry, Vice Mayor, uh, great question, great point. This is a very clean scenario where the same property was on both sides. So we don't have any other entity or property that we see now. So they would just be picking up what's beyond, pull the sector then, which they, this parcel, they don't own three parcels.
And do we not have to sign a value?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to sign a value, like a dollar value?
Uh, not in this situation.
Okay.
They're paying for the recording fees and all those details and agree to maintain this property perpetuity. No public benefit, if you will, for the property.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council and Dana, I don't know, is, is there an applicant or anyone who wishes to speak on this? Dana, are we okay to invite them up at this point?
Of course, I believe Mr. Skaggs might be in conference.
Yes, so. So, welcome. And so please state your name and, and address.
My name's Scott Skaggs.
Okay. And did, did you want to share anything in support of this?
Um, yes, the, the reason we did is this road is splitting. We would like to, to build on that upper half with that alley coming through there, that roadway coming through there. It restricts us substantially. Um, in the past, we, you know, you get people coming up, there's no reason to come through there. Aside you come to our, besides coming to our house. Um, we've had people speeding through, speeding through the property, just dangerous situations in the past. And, uh, would, it's just going to be a lot easier for us to consolidate the whole thing and be able to actually use the property. Right now, we're split. There's a lot of property there, but with that running through the middle, you know, really cuts a short on what we, what we do this property for.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, to the applicant, you, you brought this forward to us with this request?
Yes, sir.
And, um, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor to council and to Dana, uh, has there been any opposition at all to this?
Uh, there is none.
Okay, and, and just a, a, a note that this does not qualify for P and Z. This is an abandonment and everything, so this comes straight to, to council. Uh, Dana, the, and any other questions? I'm sorry.
Which is the obvious one, there's no easement issues that we need easement through there.
I, I think Dana's addressed those. Dana, to the issue of easements?
Correct, Councilman Shipley, no, uh, we have no need for an easement of APS, S, uh, Southwest Gas, as well as city utilities, sewer and water. I do not need an easement through there. However, Mr. Skaggs is designating an eight-foot public utility easement, which we like to require around any of our roadways. Uh, we probably don't have many in the community, but here's one that's been dedicated and expands to a ten-foot easement. Uh, there's a current water line that comes up Tremont and, uh, stubs right to his property and provides him with water. Um, so in recognizing the future growth in this area, uh, for instance, if this parcel, this large ten-acre parcel might develop one day or be subdivided as well as others, we like to have a water line loop. Um, so he dedicated a ten-foot easement beside the property to allow for that stub for us to connect in the future and loop a waterway, uh, the water line and provide water service to, uh, the properties, uh, adjacent. And then to the south here, they all have their, um, uh, utility, separate utility system. So we don't have any need, uh, it's a long story there.
You said you, you were asking for action, but it looks like it's for, to bring forward to me, or do you want to wait?
Well, in, go ahead, Dana, go ahead, the.
Uh, final plaque can have a motion, um, in a second and you can take action to approve or deny the final plaque. And then, like I said, I'd like to move on to that. Uh, we should probably take separate actions for, um, the resolution.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Dana, we, we agendize this as one item. We do not have this as two items. Yeah.
All right.
And, and so that is the, um.
So in that scenario, let's go ahead and move on. It sounds like we've covered the, uh, the, I would say, let's talk about both and take a single action that will improve both items. Um, so that said, obviously, the resolution is a requirement of the city's code, I think statute, uh, for council to consider abandoning. Um, and that's the mechanism we use to abandon a couple of roadways. Um, and there's a deed included in that, uh, item, uh, or in that resolution. Uh, and that's the detail that you see in the exhibit, right, exhibit showing a portion that's being abandoned. So again, staff recommends approval of this, uh, both the resolution and the final plaque.
Exactly, yes, you want us to wait for the prior discussion? That was, that was. Yeah, well, that, that's a, to approve it.
Yeah, I, I don't, has this been, I don't believe this has been to council.
And I know, uh, there, Mr. Stagg is in utero, though he hasn't been at it for about a year now. But, uh, we, uh, we consider, like I said, again, if you wish, or you're welcome to wait, the rule up, that's a option.
Then I would move to approve the resolution number eighteen seventy-nine and wait the prior discussion.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Uh, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any, any abstaining? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you have the action items? We have none.
We, we do not have any.
Uh, made agenda items?
We do have one.
One?
One.
Okay.
Okay. And, um, so this is a, uh, we have a group of on-call, um, contracts that we've gone through the procurement process. Uh, this is one of, uh, about, uh, eventually nine that'll be coming forward. Um, but we, we wanted to bring this one in early. Um, and it is, uh, with RIC engineering. It allows us to, when we have a need for an engineer, a surveyor, uh, an engineering company, uh, we have basically pre-approved through the procurement process. There's a whole RFP process, they apply, we rank them, we score them, we select them. And, and the final product on, at least on this one, is the, the RIC engineering contract. It is capped, it has a, uh, it is capped at eighty thousand, but these on-call contracts, we, we have, um, maybe three to four people who do the same work. Uh, depending on the project, their knowledge, a, a whole system is, and who's available. Um, we may not use all of them. So the, and the one thing that I would point out is, is this is to, um, approve the contract, um, to put the cap in place of eighty thousand dollars, but it doesn't mean that we're going to spend. It's not to exceed, um, but there's no minimum guaranteed. Um, it could be funded out of one of three, excuse me, line items. And that would be the public works capital, uh, construction, uh, water capital construction or, um, wastewater capital construction. Uh, now, those line items will be filled and, and money will be placed in them as part of the budget adoption process. Um, but this, this allows the contract to go forward and designates where the funds will come, but it's still contingent on, on money in those line items, which will be placed, um, afterwards. What that does is keeps us from locking up, um, money in to, tied to directly to a contract that is, um, that may never be used. And so we pull it from a bucket, from a wallet. And so that's the structure of this. There'll be more coming forward with this one, but, but this one, we, we wanted to get, uh, was ready to go and get this approved. I see the blue flag coming. You have a blue flag.
Want to wait for the votes?
E.
Is this considered an act?
No, we can, we can go ahead and, uh, it's, it's a first, well, did we go to council with the?
We did for the R.
For the RFP, so it's not the first time you've seen this at council. It was a while ago.
I have a quick question though.
Sure.
So when I was looking at the contract, it says not to exceed, but it's not clear how we build this. Does it go as hourly or is it for a job or, I mean, it's all about the amount.
The, well, the, the amount is, so they have an, um, they have a list of, of negotiated prices. It depends on the, 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 what we're asking, but, but Luis, if you want to jump up and, and answer that question.
Uh, Vice Mayor, you're, I'm interested, council. Yeah, the way it works is that, uh, each, each one of the firms submit a piece schedule with, uh, the hour degrees depending on if it is a real area, if it is an assistant, if it is, uh, uh, cat information and all that, and you have a product, then we ask them to give us, you know, the actual quote uh, to get the, the design going forward. And you could ask two or more firms and you will probably get a right next market for us to give us that design depending on how soon, you know, and who the user and the cost.
Okay, so they, you tell them what the scope of the work is and then they, they divvy out based on each schedule what hours they need and what category and.
Yes, that's, that's how we come up with the price.
So.
Thank you.
Motion, correct?
Yes, motion to approve the contract. Well, it, you pretty much have to, motion to approve everything as stated. Well, it, you pretty much have to, motion to approve everything as stated, or you can read the agenda again. No, because it's, it's, this is not the first time it's been to coun, to council, correct? We had, we had approval to go out to RFP for these contracts.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve contract number PS twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two zero dash one, on-call civil engineering professional support services with RIC engineering as needed in the amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. No minimum amount guaranteed to be funded out of account number ten dash sixty-one dash five two two zero zero, public works capital outlay. Construction number five zero dash eight zero dash five two two zero zero, capital, water capital outlay. Construction plan number five one dash eight zero dash five two two zero zero, wastewater capital out, outlay construction contingent on available funds legated in each capital outlay account as part of fiscal year twenty three, twenty four of the city annual budget.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, just, just so you, you know, that, um, uh, like I say, these, these contracts, um, um, oh, there is a, there is a point I wanted to make. Um, oh, well, I, it, it escaped me, so there you go.
Yeah, a motion in a second. Call for the vote, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, aye? Any abstaining?
And then just to add on, if, if the contract amount is under twenty-five thousand, it would just go forward as a, under twenty-five thousand. If it was over twenty-five thousand, it would come back to council as required. That was what.
The second call of the public? I don't have anything up here, Charlie. Yeah, next item is scheduling a meeting. Do you have anything?
We do have the, so we, we do have a, um, a, uh, council work group, um, on, uh, Thursday, June twenty-second, two P M. to five P M. And we'll be here in no action, but, uh, this, uh, presentation discussion of the budget. That will, we will, yes. I will. Every, so, and I, I know that, that this is the best location or the best timing. I know there might be possible, uh, some conflicts going in, but we're hoping for the best that everybody can be here. No problem. So.
Again, consideration of future agenda items? Uh, we have these sessions. So I have a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn, uh, executive session. Uh, there will be no action taken after executive session, the regular meeting.
Yeah, when we return, at the E session, we will adjourn.